So today we're acknowledging healers and healthcare heroes from the Black community in Santa Barbara County. The first is Dr. Horace McMillan. Dr. McMillan was Santa Barbara's first Black general practitioner and local civil rights advocate. He made an enduring impact on our county. In 1952, Dr. McMillan, who was also a veteran, his wife and infant daughter relocated to Santa Barbara. When a real estate agent showed him only substandard homes to purchase, it was revealed that for Black people, buying or renting property anywhere outside of a few designated neighborhoods on the city's Lower East Side was all but impossible. In some places in Santa Barbara, deed restrictions specifically barred the sale of property to persons of African, Japanese, Chinese, or Mongolian descent. But in most places, such deed restrictions weren't even necessary. Everyone understood, it just wasn't done. And at that time, the understanding was not illegal. When the opportunity came to purchase a home in Mission Canyon, the McMillans resorted to using a white nominee, someone who would purchase properties on behalf of Black purchasers, who otherwise would be blocked from closing a deal. Dr. McMillan did not just get mad. He organized, he lobbied, he agitated, and he moved the needle. For more than 15 years, he assembled a mountain of research documenting how much housing and job discrimination took place in Santa Barbara. As chairman of the NAACP's Housing and Labor Committee, Dr. McMillan sought to shatter Santa Barbara's comfortable illusions that discrimination was a problem exclusive to the American South. He took his case to City Hall, he took his case to the press, he took it to the churches, he took it to the medical establishment, he took it to the chief of police, and he took it to the most powerful man in Santa Barbara, the news press owner and publisher, Thomas Stork. And eventually, he got all of their attention. Dr. McMillan's activism parallels that of Mr. Clarence Willis and Mrs. Gloria Willis, who similarly fought back against housing segregation in Mission Hills and Vandenberg Village around the same time. As you may recall from last year's Black History Month resolution, Mr. Willis was the first Black person to purchase a home in Vandenberg Village after being denied the right to purchase a home in Mission Hills on the basis of race. Soon after, he used an intermediary to purchase three homes in Mission Hills and rented them to Black families, thereby integrating Vandenberg Village and Mission Hills. So back to Dr. McMillan, he was not only the first Black doctor in town, but he eventually created the most ethnically diverse medical practice boasting one Japanese, one Latino, one Black, and one white doctor. Together, they would build a medical office building that still stands at the corner of Chapala and Ariega. As a general practitioner, Dr. McMillan chafed at the restrictions imposed by Santa Barbara's exploding population of medical specialists hoping to protect their turf. In response, Dr. McMillan formed a partnership with seven other doctors, all GPs, to start a new hospital in Galita. By 1968, Galita Valley Hospital would open its doors to patients. When the former St. Francis Hospital charged Black patients more for the same medical services as whites, as well as employed discriminating hiring practices, he raised the issue. If America can declare war on medical diseases, then why not a similar declaration against such social illnesses as deprivation and racism? He asked. The only public record of Dr. McMillan's remarkable life is a photograph on the hallway wall just off Galita Valley Hospital's emergency room. He's one of the hospital's eight original doctors posing with their shovels during the groundbreaking ceremonies. Supervisor Williams?
Dr. Robert Hammond is a lifetime member of the NAACP. He enjoyed a 40-year career practicing medicine in Santa Maria. Born in 1931 in Tampa, Florida, he received his bachelor's degree and was commissioned as an ROTC second lieutenant with the United States Army Artillery in 1952, and was on active duty serving in the 82nd Airborne Division in Korea. Other military service includes the US Army Medical Corps, where he was a captain from 1961 to 1962. After passionately serving our country for 10 years, he graduated from UCLA and Howard University School of Medicine, completed his internship at Madigan General Hospital in Tacoma, Washington, and did his residency in San Luis Obispo. Started his medical practice in 1963 in Santa Maria and has been a member of the American Academy of Family Physicians, Santa Barbara County Medical Society, and CMA. An active staff member and chairman for Marion Medical Center. Past chairman of the Department of Medicine and chief of staff of Valley Community Hospital and the Democratic Club of Santa Maria Valley, serving monthly since its inception in the Adopta Road. He and his wife Louise have five children, 10 grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren. And he remains very active, providing seminars on healthy eating and ordering and giving away books on how not to die.
Dr. Albert Hawkins, like so many talented professionals in our county, Dr. Hawkins' service in the Air Force brought him to Vandenberg Air Force Base when he began his career as a physician after graduating from medical school in 1977. In 1984, Dr. Hawkins opened his private practice in Santa Maria, California. He has held many offices, including chief of staff and chief of internal medicine at KI Sawyer AF Air Force Base Hospital and Valley Community Hospital in Santa Maria, as well as secretary treasurer, chairman of quality assurance, and chair of the credentials committee at Valley Medical Center. He has also been involved with Marion Medical Center as past chief of staff, medical director, critical pathways development, as well as the medical director for Marion Medical Center Hospice and Home Care. Dr. Hawkins has been involved with the community by serving on the SNCAL Board of Directors and Physician Advisory Committee for SNCAL. Dr. Hawkins is a board-certified physician by the American Board of Internal Medicine, and he now resides in Napoma with his wife and enjoys life with his children and dogs.
Dr. Richard Bezwick, vice president of Research and chief research officer of Cottage Health. He's had more than two decades of experience in research, both as an accomplished scientist and as administrative leader for several research programs, expertise in hypertension and kidney disease in particular. Part of the draw to Santa Barbara was the opportunity for further partnerships between UCSB and Cottage Health. The collaborative research symposium brings the two institutions together to explore different and new ways of how local university research and clinical pieces can collaborate, leading the way to new discoveries about human health.
Mrs. Charletha Anderson, registered nurse, retired. Mrs. Anderson spent most of her nursing career working in Texas and was part of the Texas State Board of Nursing. In 2003, she journeyed to Santa Maria to visit her son, daughter-in-law, and grandchildren, and has lived there ever since. She immediately started work as an RN at Marion Medical Center. She is a member of the Lifeway Fellowship Southern Baptist Church in Santa Maria, is mother of two, and has six grandchildren and one great-grandson. She served on the executive committee of the Santa Maria Lompoc NAACP for many years and is now an executive committee member emeritus.
Ms. Sonia Brown, RN, retired. Sonia Brown retired from the Lompoc Valley Medical Center, where she started her career in nursing exactly 40 years prior. Born in Jamaica, Ms. Brown studied nursing in England and met and married a US service member stationed there, eventually relocating to Vandenberg Air Force Base in 1977. At Lompoc Hospital, Ms. Brown has helped to deliver thousands of babies over her career. She never wanted to work in another department, describing the labor and delivery department as "the journey of love." Every time she would help deliver a baby, her heart would race with love, seeing a new life in the world, knowing how it started. She mentored countless nurses through her career and served as an inspiration to many more.
Mrs. Carolyn Fulton-Lvien retired. Mrs. Felton moved with her family to Santa Barbara, California in 1955. Upon high school graduation, she entered the Job Corps where she graduated from their vocational nursing program, and she became a licensed vocational nurse in 1975. Her nursing career spans more than 40 years, beginning at Cottage Hospital where she worked in the OB-GYN department. Over the years, she held nursing positions at Sansom, Santa Barbara Medical Foundation Clinic, working in pediatrics and OB-GYN departments, where she ran the back office at the Lompoc Clinic. She finished her nursing career with the California State Department of Corrections, working as a nurse officer for 14 years, retiring in 2002. After retiring, she enrolled and completed the Drug and Alcohol Counseling Program at Allen Hancock College. Still yearning to return to the medical profession, she worked for Maxim Healthcare from 2008 until 2015 as a home healthcare nurse. She was widowed in 2019 after being married to her beloved Gregory Felton for 43 and a half years. They are the parents of two daughters and three grandchildren.
Dr. Charlotte Gallup-Moore, CEO of Moron Health. She is a nurse practitioner, nursing professor, healthcare policy advocate, and organic gardening ambassador. She's a woman who wears many hats. Dr. Moore is on a mission to deliver personalized, high-quality healthcare services, provide evidence-based health promotion, primary prevention, disease and medical practice management for the adult geriatric patient population, facilitating healthcare policy advocacy, diversity, equity, and inclusion consulting, and health and wellness discussion. Moron Health believes in educating and empowering the community at large on how to make healthier lifestyle choices, as well as advocate for those with limited medical care.
Nina Shelton, Clinical Research Assistant at Sansom Diabetes Research Institute. A recent graduate of Cell and Developmental Biology at UC Santa Barbara, Nina lives with type I diabetes, and working at Sansom Diabetes Research Institute has given her an incredible opportunity to improve the lives of those impacted by diabetes. This work is especially important as Black Americans, who are significantly more likely to have a premature death due to diabetes than other racial groups, face more lower-limb amputations and are diagnosed with end-stage renal disease.
Jonathan Thompson II. He's a marriage and family therapist. He is an experienced Black mental health clinician in Santa Barbara County with over a decade of experience working with children, adolescents, young adults, couples, parents, and families, including resource parents. Utilizes a trauma-informed framework and an eclectic approach coupled with conversational style in his therapeutic work.
Dana A. Williams, Marriage and Family Therapist, M.A., LMFT. Ms. Williams specializes in helping people break destructive patterns of coping through the use of practical, evidence-based coping skills and personal processing in Santa Barbara County. Williams is a past president of the California Association of Marriage and Family Therapists, Santa Barbara Chapter, and has served on the Board of Directors since 2010. She was recently nominated for a Director-at-Large position on the Board of Directors at the California Association of Marriage and Family Therapists, an organization that represents over 33,000 psychotherapists in the state of California.
Solomon Ndungo. Mr. Ndungo is a marriage and family therapist based in Santa Barbara County, and his work with his clients continues to give great insight into how we all can live better, healthier lives, a sense of fulfillment, peace of mind. He specializes in finding perspectives that help alleviate suffering, creating a space for healing and thriving in his clients.
The UCSB Counseling and Psychological Services is also known as CAPS. Dr. Brian Alode, PhD, director psychologist. He is a cross-cultural psychologist dedicated to issues of social justice and mental health equity. At the CAPS Center, he establishes a supportive and respectful setting for both students and staff. His commitment to social justice and community were instilled by his grandmother and mother, both of whom were forces of nature when it came to serving those in need. As a first-generation college graduate, Mr. Alode understands the power that education has to transform one's life and is passionate in making sure all students are afforded the resources needed for support and success.
Dr. Meredith Merchant, Assistant Director of Mental Health Initiatives and Inclusion. Dr. Merchant specializes in empowering and supporting students who may feel marginalized, specifically students from the African diaspora, women's health, academic success, mind and body balance, and wellness. She holds group space for creating community, graduate students of African heritage, and managing life after the loss of a loved one.
Dr. Mario J. Barfield, Doctor of Psychology. Dr. Barfield has worked at CAPS since 2013 and supports Black identifying students who have demanded more representation within campus departments at UCSB to support academic success and wellness. Dr. Barfield works from a collaborative, strength-based, integrative perspective informed by a lens that centers multiculturalism, social justice, and the intersecting nature of identity.
Dr. Dominique Bressard. She works at CAPS at UCSB and focuses on creating an environment of warmth and safety for the therapeutic journey of her clients. She focuses on providing culturally responsive therapy, especially for Black identified students.
And Dr. Janelle Davis, PhD psychologist, works at CAPS and has clinical interest in stress management, health and wellness, depression, anxiety, and adjustment to life transitions and chronic illness, and supporting mental health and wellness among individuals within the Black community.
Marsha Wiley, licensed clinical social worker and clinical coordinator. She works at CAPS and specializes in cultural competency, diversity, mediation, conflict resolution, issues of divorce, and strength-based interventions.
The Healing Space at UCSB. The Hosford Counseling and Psychological Services Clinic, based at UC Santa Barbara's Gavitz School, has launched a new service in 2020, The Healing Space. The Healing Space is a specialty clinic that provides psychological services to Black identifying clients of all ages. In addition to general stressors and life issues, The Healing Space acknowledges the effects of racial trauma, marginalization, and injustice on social and health disparities among Black communities. All services are provided by Black identifying therapists who have an interest in addressing the negative toll of anti-Black racism on Black residents in our local community, made possible by a generous gift of local philanthropists Carrie Tobes and John Lewis, who worked with Jordan Killibrue and the Healing Justice Santa Barbara to launch this effort. Healing Justice Santa Barbara is a Black-led and Black-centered organizing collective that aspires to build resilient communities for the African diaspora and other marginalized people along the Central Coast. Mr. Jordan Killibrue pointed out the pressing need for Black therapists in the Santa Barbara community, especially during the pandemic and ongoing anti-racial upheavals of 2020. And I believe receiving the resolution is Lawanda Lyons-Pruitt and Jordan Killibrue and Wendy Sims-Moten. Madam Clerk?
Chair Hartman and members of the board. That is correct, and they are joining us via Zoom today. And if either of them had some comments that they would like to share, now would be the time to do so. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Hart.
Hi, Lawanda.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you so much. Wow, my heart is full. Today, we rejoice. Thank you so much for recognizing all of our healthcare professionals who stand on the shoulders of giants. They paid the ultimate price and made the ultimate sacrifice so that they and I would have a better life, and we thank them. We celebrate today. And as I listened to Reverend Tullis and his rendition of the Negro National Anthem, it stood out to me something in those lyrics. He said, "Out from the gloomy past, till now we stand at last, where the white gleam of our bright star is cast." So we rejoice today, and we rejoice in the triumphs, the resiliency, and the struggle of Blacks and African-Americans throughout the United States. We know that our path, that it has been gloomy. And some people say, "Well, what's all of us about?" Dr. Woodson said it best when he said, "If a race has no history, it stands in danger of being exterminated." And we celebrate because it's not about recognizing and taking a look at the harm that was done over the years by slavery, racism, oppression of a people, but it is all history. And I just get so upset over this critical race theory. This is all history. We don't need anyone to tell us about the harm. We know the harm that was caused. And as my friend Wendy said, we know our history is American history. It wasn't recognized, as I said last year, when I came before you, and I mentioned my history growing up in rural Mississippi and how I did not know my past. I led a very sheltered life there in rural Mississippi. I didn't know about slavery. I knew about serbs. I saw the Jim Crow, the effects of Jim Crow, the white and the colored signs when I went out with my grandparents. My test books, they had no mention of Blacks, African-Americans. We heard about serbs, and that made it seem glorious. Nothing about lynching a Black man, 14-year-old Emmett Till and the bombing of churches. But we celebrate because it is all history. It's American history. 365 days a year, as my friend Wendy would say. And when we celebrate, we honor, we remember the past, we celebrate the present, and we inspire future generations. Thank you so much. We appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawanda.
Good morning, Chair Hartman and members of the board. Thank you, Lawanda. I want to take your words to, my heart is truly full. I don't know if you can see it, but I was truly smiling every time with the name and the things, you know, and the work that they're doing. I'm just so proud to be on this day celebrating and recognizing these professionals who have stepped up and stepped out to addressing health disparities in the African-American community, in the community of color abroad. And so I also want to thank you, Chair Hartman and Supervisor Williams, for supporting this resolution and thanking your staff for getting it here on the first day of February. We really do, oftentimes we don't get to do that. And I just also want to recognize, congratulate, and express my heartfelt appreciation for our honorees and the work that they continue to do. And I hope that you're curious beyond this moment and beyond this moment in a year, that your curiosity will take you to learn more about Black history that is not always shared, is not always told, and is not always known by a great many of us, you see? Because sometimes it feels like the trials and tribulation and the invisible contributions of Black America happened somewhere else, but it happened in the cities, in the counties, in the state, in the country of America. And we know that our experiences shape our worldview of the world. We must continue to bring it forward to make sure that we're learning from our path to have a better future. And I'm hopeful that in a new history book, all history and contributions will be reflected. I know there's going to be a big book, so I'm ready and ready to do it. So students, get ready to read that. You see, we cannot be the great inclusive, accessible, diversity, city, county, state, country that we aspire to be if we continue to only be the sum of some of our parts and not the sum of all of our parts. I want to thank you again for this Black History Month 22 Resolution. I hope and I look forward to connecting what we're learning today, what we've read today, even the song that we heard today. It helps of be better tomorrow and a better future, that it impacts our policies and our processes of what we do to ensure that all our citizens feel that they are healthy and that they're safe, and that they are identified and that they matter. And we have a saying at First Five, "Talk, Read, and Sing," because it changes everything. So the more that we talk about it, we read about it, even sing about it, the better we will be. And it truly can change things. So we must continue to talk and making sure that we're reading, making sure everything is there for us to read, and to sing some songs that can, in the gloom of the white gleam, that'll take us there to see that. And it's only going to make us better, all of us better, in terms of that. You know, we say USA, that means us. And then A, I know this is not grammatically correct, but it means us all. So thank you so much. I am so, so proud to be today celebrating this resolution and sitting on this platform and this presence of, you know, Dr., you know, all of the doctors and everybody that's there enduring their staying for making us a healthy community. And I'm so proud to have worked on this with Ms. Lawanda and Mr. Jordan.
Woo, well, thank you. A huge thank you to the County of Santa Barbara, Board of Supervisors, staff, Gina who worked closely with us, and others, for this is an honor to receive this recognition and, of course, share my insight. It's also an honor to be considered with Ms. Wendy and Ms. Lawanda. You've heard the passion in them, and I am so grateful to just work with them and stand on their shoulders. As you can tell, I'm a big fan, and it's humbling, and I'm grateful to come back another year to share on our experience and honor our ancestors. The 2020 theme of Black Joy and Legacy Through Family Health and Safety connects us all to the uplifting, the joy, accomplishments, challenges, stories, and successes of local Black African-American individuals. Names that have been mentioned like Dr. Horace McMillan or Charlotte Gallup-Moore and others come to mind that had significant impact on our region. This is why we do this work, not only for recognition during February, but that the hope that these impactful stories are woven into our everyday lives. We are thankful to Black-led organizations who have been working to plan events for February and also year-round. Of course, we had to pivot to make some of our events virtual, but nonetheless, we provide these events opportunities to engage and dialogue and, again, uplift our ancestors to remind us all that it takes all of us, USA, to achieve true equity and tell the true stories of our land. I want to thank you again for this recognition, and to learn more about this month's events and future events, please go to juneteenthsb.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Killibrue. And Madam Clerk, for public comment?
Yes, Chair Hartman and members of the board. We have three requests to speak on this item, and we are going to Zoom to begin with Jonathan Abud, to be followed by Anna Everett.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Hi, hello. My name is Jonathan Abud. I live in Ilovis and not representing anyone today. I wanted to appreciate the work being highlighted in this resolution by Black healthcare providers and the comments made by the wonderful recipients. This last weekend, I attended the vigil at the courthouse for Jonathan Paul Thomas, who passed away in the jail, and they shared many stories of that vigil of poor health conditions in there. And we know that the jail disproportionately incarcerates Black and Brown people. So thank you Supervisor Hart for attending that, and I wanted to support the ongoing effort of the board to reduce the jail population. Thank you for passing this resolution.
Thank you.
We will now go to Anna Everett, to be followed by Luz Raze Martin, who is our final speaker.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. Happy Black History Month, everyone. I just have to say, as, as my friend Wendy Sims-Moten said and Lawanda Lyons-Pruitt said, my heart is so full. But I just want to begin by saying thank you so much, Chair Hartman and Supervisor Williams, for promoting and endorsing and, you know, presenting this resolution. It's so important because right now, I just feel like the amen corner. It's so important because right now I just feel like the amen corner. I had some things I wanted to say, but I've just been blown away by what I've heard. And I just want to paraphrase Mookie from Spike Lee's Do the Right Thing movie when he asked Saul in the pizzeria, "Why aren't there no brothers on the wall?" I want to say thank you supervisors for putting our Black brothers and sisters on the wall of Santa Barbara County, sharing what it is that they have done, continue to do and have done in the past to what I want to call move us towards a more perfect and equitable, beloved community. So thank you so much for that. And also, I want to say Reverend Tullis, that lift every voice and saying rendition that you did just really reminded me of how I've never heard the song sang in its fullness before. So thank you for that. I've only just heard, you know, the first verse, and it was beautiful and inspiring. I mean, I thought I was ready and motivated, but this presentation today, I feel like I just left a graduate seminar on the history and the past and the future of Santa Barbara County. So I'm speaking for myself as an African-American woman and activist in the community and also, you know, for myself, even though I do serve as a commissioner on the Santa Barbara County Commission for Women in the Second District. Right now, I just want to thank you for this, and I have thirty-eight seconds left. So thank you so much. You guys did a great job. It's so wonderful. And thank you again, supervisors and Chair Hartman and Williams for doing this and signing your name onto this. It's just wonderful. Thank you. Happy Black History Month.
We will now go to our final speaker, Luz Reyes Martin. Luz?
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Hartman, Vice Chair Williams and members of the board. I'm Luz Reyes Martin, and I'm the Vice President of Community Engagement at Planned Parenthood California Central Coast. I want to start by thanking Lawanda Lyons-Pruitt, Wendy Sims-Moten and Jordan Kilabru for being powerful community and justice leaders and for all your many contributions to Santa Barbara County. I'm calling in this morning with appreciation to the board for your resolution and the presentation this morning, recognizing and celebrating Black History Month. As has been mentioned, the theme this year is Black Health and Wellness. In accordance with this theme, at Planned Parenthood, we honor Black communities and Black-led organizations, while also highlighting and continuing to implement the equity work that remains undone, especially within our healthcare system. As we celebrate the contributions of Black Americans this month, it's never been clearer how essential Black communities, and Black women especially, are to the backbone of our society. And I'd like to also lift up Dr. Charlotte Gillette-Moore. She is truly a powerhouse in her roles as CEO of Moron Health, as a nurse practitioner, professor of nursing and healthcare advocate. We are so proud to have her on our Board of Directors and thank her for her service to our communities. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this morning.
Thank you, Luz. Glad you could be here. And that was our final speaker. So bringing it back to the board, Supervisor Hart.
Well, the goal of Black History Month is to bring attention to the countless noteworthy, valuable and foundational contributions made by the African-American Black community to the United States and Santa Barbara County. And I really want to thank Supervisors Hartman and Williams for the deep research and the wonderful highlighting and the incredible contributions these Black healers have made to our county. And I know that if we weren't limited to just two board members sponsoring a resolution, this would have five sponsors, and I appreciate the work that you did. And I also just want to thank all the public members who spoke today. I feel the same energy and enthusiasm and just joy in my heart to have this opportunity to really have a positive, affirming accounting of just the amazing contributions that so many people have made to the history of Santa Barbara County. And it's so important to ground the truths of these experiences in our own community, to not think about these things as they radiate out through the national lens, but to remind ourselves that we have our own history here in our county that has not been just and equitable and right, and that we have a lot of work to do here on our own place where we live and work and relate to each other, and a lot of work to do to make things better. And that we're all committed to that, and I know everyone who participated in the meeting today is as committed as all of us to that, and that gives me great optimism for the future.